Planning Board Meeting Thursday, June 17, 2021. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 8, 2021, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Trittown News. Second, on January 8, 2021, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 8, 2021, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Members of the public will have a chance to ask questions and comment on applications once the chairman opens the hearing up to members of the public. If you wish to ask questions or comments on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature and we will bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need to have audio and video capability. You will be sworn in and you will need to provide your name and address. For anyone calling in, you can raise your hand by dialing *9. To lower your hand, you would dial *9 again and *6 to mute or unmute yourself. This meeting is also being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Here.
Mr. Dorado has been excused. Mr. Husser?
Here.
Thank you. Chief Kudrick has been excused. Mr. Leggio?
Here.
Mr. Nacastro has been excused. Councilwoman Richmond?
Here.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Ms. Casper?
Here.
Mr. Cristiano?
Here.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, could everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence for those serving here and abroad and for all of our first responders, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, do we have an approval of any minutes?
We have no minutes this evening.
Any vouchers?
We have no vouchers this evening.
Any correspondence?
We do have correspondence. We have a couple of ordinances that the council has introduced and they need to be commented on for consistency with the master plan as our next meeting is after the council's next meeting. The first ordinance is Ordinance 21-13.
I think Ms. Ribena, I think Mr. Cucchiaro probably wants to make a statement.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I had a discussion with the Township Attorney Joe Clark today. We're going to carry the sidewalk ordinance. There's a few issues that Joe and I want to go through before we review it and send it back to the council. So that one will be carried.
That's Ordinance 21-15.
And 21-13, I believe, right?
21-13 is for cannabis.
You are correct.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Ordinance 21-13 is an ordinance which adds cannabis in the various classifications to the prohibited use list under 18867. So while obviously we don't have a lot of specific language in the master plan that discusses that, you know, there's nothing in the master plan that is inconsistent with that prohibition. So I would make a recommendation that this is not inconsistent with the master plan.
And, Mr. Chairman, just for some further background, the legislation that was adopted in New Jersey requires a municipality to affirmatively opt out from cannabis as being a lawful use and August is the date in order to have achieved that by. So municipalities around, some of them, some are up, you know, are, you know, not objecting to it, but we have to get this ordinance passed before August if the town is to opt out.
Fair enough. So what's the procedure? Do I just ask for a motion?
A motion that the proposed ordinance is substantially consistent with the master plan.
That the prohibition is substantially consistent?
Well, the proposed ordinance, I would just say the proposed ordinance is substantially consistent.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for this ordinance that it is substantially consistent with our master plan.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
No.
Mr. Leggio?
No.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
No.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
What was the final vote on that, Eileen?
Five affirmative, three noes.
Okay. All right, so we will send that to the governing body.
Thank you. Okay, any other correspondence, please?
Yes, we're going to hold Ordinance 21-15. We also have correspondence that I mailed to all the members yesterday from Matt Howard regarding a concept for green acres grants application for improvements to Deerwood Park in Ramtown. One of the requirements is to have a letter from the Planning Board discussing how the project is consistent with the master plan.
Correct.
And he has a letter.
Mr. Chairman, we have the letter. I also prepared a resolution which was sent out authorizing the letter to be executed. And as Eileen stated, it's just one of the requirements in order to be eligible for the grant money. So we would just need a vote to authorize the execution and sending of the letter.
Okay, for those maybe newer to the Planning Board, Ms. Beam, it's my understanding that part of our master plan, we recently revised our recreational element, which included the desire to make renovations to our parks. So I believe that, my personal opinion, that this would be consistent with the master plan.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, may I, before we go on? So I take the park improvement plan very personal to me because I've been spending a lot of time with Matt Howard and the manager on that. So that letter, thank you for that letter, and the sooner the better because we have a lot of new things coming to Deerwood Park, as you can see. I did make a couple of different recommendations. I'm not sure if you get a revision, but I had a couple of different ideas that were not listed in there. So I'm hoping that Howard and the manager review it. And just some additions, little additions to some things that are coming up. I have a lot of kids and I know what the kids like over in those parks and I know what they don't like. So I just made some suggestions, but that letter was good. Thank you. And we'll get moving on that. I can't wait. I'm looking forward to those renovations.
Can I just ask a question? I don't know if this is the time for it, but I did see the letter. I think it's great. I don't, can we get into the specifics or not? Does it have anything to do with the baseball fields whatsoever?
I don't know. There was a plan that was attached with everything.
Yeah, there was a plan. It gave the details of what we were looking at as far as, now, this is Deerwood Park. It's not Howell, oops, Howell Central, Nick.
No, I understand, but I play in Howell South as well and
You wanted to put up the plan?
If you could, that'd be great. I just read the letter and I didn't see anything mentioned about the baseball fields.
I think I can't. I don't know.
Because I don't think there's anything that is necessary right now for those fields over there. They're in pretty good shape. My son plays there too, so.
Son plays in the older ones.
Oh, in the back? Yeah. I don't recall that there's anything that is necessary right now or of urgency as far as the fields go because I think there's a lot of other things that need attention over there as far as like the roller rinks and stuff like that and the skate park. Because there's a lot of things over there that needs some tender loving care.
I don't have the plan saved there, so I can't get it. But I can just tell you what's on here. It says there's new skate park equipment, repairing cracks and resurfacing the skate park, some security camera poles and footings, picnic tables on concrete pads near the ball fields, security cameras, basketball hoop system and foundation, basketball courts, four square courts, repair existing asphalt surface underlying a hockey rink and remove the existing hockey rink boards and fence.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything baseball related.
And some pickleball courts.
I just want to go on the record. This has been a thing when Jim Herman was even around and those three back baseball fields, there's games canceled because of the condition they're in. And I would just highly suggest that somebody from the township get with the Howell South Board because it's been a long, ongoing issue with that.
I have put a request into the manager to meet with all the sporting presidents of all the leagues and get a wish list because the park improvement plan is something that we're still going forward with. This is just something a little different. And I asked for a wish list from each president of every league, not just baseball. I'm a baseball mom, so I, you know, I tend to lean a little that way, but it has to be fair across the board. And I'm waiting for those wish lists from each president. And then we can also implement that with our green acres and showing forward. But right now, we're working on this and not to say that that's not something that we're looking at down the road. Because I did speak to Howell Central as well and we're working on something with him as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Before we go further, Ron, are we taking a motion that it's consistent and then a separate motion for the resolution to memorialize it?
No, no, no. What we're doing is we're just taking a vote authorizing the letter to be sent and that is the, that is the resolution that we have.
Okay.
That authorizes us. We just need one vote to authorize the transmission of the letter.
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Second?
Nick?
Give it a second, please.
Who was the second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. The final item is just, we've met with the Township Manager and we've decided that we are going to resume in-person meetings beginning in September. So I've been back and forth with Ron's office regarding the notice for the paper and we felt that it was best to have a cutoff so that as we have applicants being scheduled, they can notice accordingly. So the remainder of July and August will still be on Zoom and in September, we will resume in-person meetings in the meeting room here at the township. I guess my question is for the notice, is the master plan subcommittee going to stay at 5:30 when they resume in person or are they going to go back to 7?
I think that my recommendation is that we stay at 5:30. But it actually is a subcommittee unless in a quorum, it's not even required to be noticed.
Okay.
But I'll work with the subcommittee at our next meeting on that and then we'll get that into our notice if necessary.
All right, thank you. And that's all the correspondence I have.
And, Mr. Chairman, we're going to carry the two resolutions to the next meeting.
Okay.
And just one other item. There is one application on the agenda. It is Mr. Pape's application for Mark Chikotano. It's a minor subdivision, but there was a problem with the notice. So that needs to be, the public needs to be noticed that that will not be heard tonight and they will renotice for August 19, 2021.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. So then we'll go right into submission waivers.
Yes.
First submission waiver is case number SP-1087, Hutton Street, 17 LLC.
Hold on one second. We have Mr. DeLuca is, Del Duca is the attorney.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Council.
Hi, how are you? Damien Del Duca with the law firm of Del Duca Lewis on the attorney representing the applicant, Hutton ST 17 LLC.
Okay, Mr. Del Duca, I know you've been here before. I don't know if you've done the submission waivers. What we normally do is we just turn it over to our board engineer to see if there's any specific requests she has any issues with, then you can respond to that.
Sure.
Laura, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I actually had an opportunity to review the waiver with the engineer earlier today. I have requested that items 60, 69, and 75 be provided prior to a public hearing. A lot of that goes to the drainage and I think that we will need that information before hearing. So with that, I take no exception to the granting of the balance of these waivers for the purposes of deeming the application complete.
Okay, great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
So just Laura, which are the items that you would want before we have a hearing?
60, 69, and 75.
Okay, Council, do you have any problem with submitting those prior to the public hearing?
No problem at all. Thank you.
Okay, then if the board wants to, it can take a motion to grant the remainder of the waiver requests with the exception of items 60, 69, and 75 being submitted prior to the public hearing.
Great. Well, if nobody has any further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Paul.
I'll second it.
Or if you open. Yes.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you at the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Del Duca. Okay, application before the board is case number SP-1078, New Horizon Properties LLC.
That is Mr. Pape.
Good evening.
Good evening. Am I coming through, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, members of the board, board professionals and public, good evening all. Kenneth Pape, on behalf of the applicant, New Horizon Properties, Roman numeral 2. This is an application for a preliminary and final site plan approval for a 25,000-square-foot retail center located at the corner of Colts Neck Road and Route 33, where currently there is a gas station and a farm stand. Our founder is the owner of both of those properties and has previously merged them into a single parcel. If I, this application was previously determined to be complete, was previously scheduled for public hearing and carried to this evening and accordingly, there is no new notices to provide to the board this evening. And, Mr. Chair, I'd like to begin with a thank you to the board and to the board's professionals. The applicant has been working with the board's professional, the board's professionals for a number of months. We have addressed a number of issues and we're pleased to report to you what we have accomplished. We have not yet completed the stormwater comments to satisfy Ms. Newman's office. Accordingly, this evening, we're going to ask to be permitted to present approximately 45 minutes' worth of testimony on five separate, and then to ask that this can be carried for further of the public hearing after we conclude our review with Ms. Newman.
Okay. Mr. Pape, at the end of the testimony that you are going to provide, do you want to open it up to the public for specifically the subject that you're discussing? Or will you not have completed your testimony and you want to carry it to the next meeting?
Mr. Chair, I appreciate the opportunity to respond. The decision is the board and I would not usurp it, but I will tell you that I think we have a lot to share with you, but it's going to stop in the middle.
Got it.
And I think that it might be more prudent if the public were to speak at the conclusion of the balance of the presentation. We're moving forward this evening because we have the opportunity and I know how very busy your board has become. We want, not want to waste this evening by pulling the application off in its entirety.
Okay, we'll play it by ear and readdress that later.
And we will follow your good guidance.
Thank you.
And for the, by way of outline, Stuart Challoner is the design engineer and Michael Testa is the architect, Scott Kennel is the traffic expert, and Julie Kobeski is the certified landscape architect, all of whom have been working on this file diligently. And the outline that I offered to you for our presentation is we intend to present you a general overall description of the site plan to, and then to go into the traffic elements that Mr. Kennel has addressed. You'll hear Mr. Kennel describe that there's currently a lot of driveways and they're not working properly and they're very close to the traffic signal. Mr. Kennel has gone to the DOT and worked out a new scheme of driveways that is safe and far separated from the intersection and will have right-in, right-out controls. And we would present that to you. I have had the opportunity to spend time on two separate meetings with Fire Chief Lewis to go over his concerns with regard to the site. And I'm pleased that you'll see his most recent report indicating he has no further concerns. We'd like to go through how we addressed his concerns. We also had a number of comments on the architecture of the building. And Mr. Testa has worked to revise those plans and has resubmitted those. Like to have the opportunity to go through architecture with you. And finally, and most significantly, our original, our original submission did not receive accolades from your professionals when it came to the landscaping. And Mr. Bruce Olowski, who is our client, retained Malillo and Bauer, a very noteworthy landscape firm for purposes of doing a new landscape plan. Prior to putting pen to paper, I met with Ms. Spiro on the property to gain some insight as to issues that she had identified. And then we brought on Julie Kobeski, who is the landscape architect. And we're proud and we hope that you're pleased with that new landscape plan that's to be presented. So our presentation would be overall DOT-related, fire department-related, architecture-related, and landscape. And then, Mr. Chair, we would ask for the opportunity to continue to work with your professionals before returning.
And you will also be addressing the Farmers Advisory Committee comments about the left farmland buffer?
I think that we can. I believe that we have addressed that with the redesign. I'm not, when Mr. Challoner is up, I'll ask him, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Thank you.
So with that and with a promise that we will be succinct, I'm going to ask if Mr. Challoner could be sworn. We'll share with you his credentials and go right into his presentation.
Do you swear or affirm the very succinct testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I will.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
My name is Stuart Challoner, C-H-A-L-L-O-N-E-R.
Okay, Council, if you could just qualify, Mr. Challoner?
Sure. Mr. Challoner, please share with the board and board's professionals and the public your professional and educational background.
Good evening. I'm a licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey. I've appeared in front of your board several times. I've been licensed since 1989 and have owned my own practice in Toms River since 1995.
And, Mr. Challoner, would you confirm that your license in the state of New Jersey is in good standing?
Yes, it is. Licensed, both engineer and planners, in good standing.
And the plans that you'll present this evening were prepared in your office under your direction?
That's correct, yes.
Mr. Chair, I respectfully request that Mr. Challoner be allowed to testify this evening as a professional engineer and planner.
Well, accept his credentials.
I thank you. Mr. Challoner, if you could identify to the board the exhibits upon which you intend to rely so that our host is able to bring those up onto the screen.
So we submitted two color exhibits, the first being entitled site rendering or overall site rendering. Eileen, do I put them up or do you put them up? Yeah, you're muted.
I can do it if you want.
Either way, can I share my screen?
You can if you want to do it.
All right, let me, give me one second. I'll just get it up on my screen.
Thank you.
Sorry, share screen. That work? It can, is my screen visible for all the board members?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great, perfect. I'm usually, by seven o'clock at night, all my IT people would be gone and very limited. So the property is, as previously stated, it's known as slots 77 and 77.01, block 183. It's a parcel that's located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Colts Neck Road and Route 33. It currently has an existing gas station at the corner, which is a private brand gas station. In the, I think approximately 20 years ago, we appeared in front of the township to convert the service space to convenience store. And at that time, we built the convenience store. We put new canopies and pumps and tanks in the ground and it's been functioning by the applicant since that time. This application tonight, we purchased the property adjoining it, lot 77, which was the old format. It had the garden stand in front of it, has access only on Route 33. Actually, it has access on Route 33 and Colts Neck Road, small access on Colts Neck. The applicant purchased that property when we were in front of the board. We were trying to design a project to bring Dollar General to remove the gas stations and we realized because of the farmland buffers and restrictions, our project would be better served if we combined both lots together. And that is the application that we're presenting tonight. Currently, there's, the gas station has two access points on Route 33 and the format has one curb access on Route 33. So currently, there's three access points. The applicant is proposing to construct approximately a 25,000-square-foot complex. Will have a single access point on Route 33. We placed it as far to the west on our property away from the traffic light as permitted. And you can see that the, in the colored rendering, the area that's colored is the area of being proposed to be disturbed with the improvements. And you can see the majority of the property to the northwest is going to be left in its natural state. That property is inundated with wetlands and restrictions from the DEP. So we're not proposing to encroach into northwest corner of the property at all. So the applicant is, again, removing three access points on Route 33 and proposing a single right turn in, right turn out to provide access from the state highway. And then we are removing the access for the driveway on Colts Neck or the gas station and proposing a new access, full access onto Colts Neck Road as far to the north of the property, again, trying to stay as far away from the traffic signal as possible to allow for queuing, not to interfere with our traffic or egress into the other property. So that's the generalization. We propose a L-shaped development. The major tenant will be a Dollar General in the southwest corner of the development. And we provide a parking in front of the strip center. We try to mimic the strip center across the Route 33 as a guide. So we are doing similar, parking in the front, both on Colts Neck Road and Route 33. All loading would be done screened by the buildings in the back. I don't want to touch into the drainage system. We have loading, the trash enclosure, everything will be screened in the back of the building. So nothing would be visible from Route 33. The applicant has submitted plans. The applicant has submitted plans for review for landscaping. And those plans have been revised and resubmitted based on our original reviews from the planner. And the project has been revised and upgraded to eliminate some of the design waivers that were listed in the original report. And the revised plans, I believe, are dated March two thousand and twenty-one that are being presented in front of you tonight.
Mr. Challoner, I have a couple of short questions for you. So the storm, you and Ms. Newman are continuing to work on the final stormwater design. It's my understanding that you elected to include an infiltration basin system as your stormwater design. And that the direction from the township professionals is to go to a detention system. Are you comfortable that you can incorporate into this plan in the general locations of your stormwater management that, those revised features?
Yes, we'll convert the systems. It was brought to our attention that the, that the township is frowned upon infiltration basins. And we can convert the basins by providing aqua filters that would provide the water quality standards. And make them dry basins considered detention basins, although it would be considered a dry basin.
Mr. Chair and board members, we, I wanted Mr. Challoner to share that with you. To, that he is comfortable that he will be able to address the requirements of Ms. Newman and her staff. I also would ask if you could, because shortly after your testimony, Mr. Tester will present the architecture of the building and the sign. Could you describe where the freestanding monument sign is located?
Ten, I'm gonna just do a large rendering. Okay, so the, the exhibit that's in front of you is basically the same exhibit as before. It's just that doesn't have the trees blocking some of our view. The applicant is proposing two ground identification signs. The major sign will be at the intersection of Colts Neck Road and Route thirty-three. The minimum setback will meet the twenty-foot setback off of Route thirty-three. And then the secondary sign, a smaller sign will be at the main access drive off of Route thirty-three. If you look, there's a small rectangle right at the corner of the first island. On that, on the egress drive when you come in, again, that will meet the setback requirement of twenty feet from Route thirty-three. Those are the two monument signs that we're proposing.
And Mr. Challoner, can you address Chairman Tana House's question? As to whether the farmland buffers of the township have been respected in this design?
Yes, our original submission, we had a small retaining wall behind the parking lot adjacent to the. Or let me just explain where the, where the, the farmland. The property to the north of our property along Colts Neck is an existing horse farm. And our attempt was to provide a fifty-foot buffer along the entire length of that frontage. Majority of that frontage, obviously, because of the wetlands restrictions, is going to be left in its natural state. And we did revise the plan to pull the, the retaining wall outside of the fifty-foot buffer. So there'll be a clear fifty-foot buffer along that common property line.
So is it an accurate and a complete statement that the farmland advisory board's requirement? Recommendation requirement that there be no encroachments in the farmland buffer and the farmland buffer be in place along all farm properties?
That, that's correct.
Will be in the plan?
That's correct.
Mr. Chair, I do not want to go into the grading and drainage with Mr. Challoner this evening. I had asked that he be prepared to present this so that the board could get the visual of the plan. That, that concludes my direct examination of Mr. Challoner this evening. As you can see, there's considerable testimony and drainage and grading that needs to be placed on the record. And accordingly, that it would be appropriate to not open up the, open up examination of Mr. Challoner in the, in the middle of, of his testimony. With your, and with your permission, Mr. Chair, we would go to our next witness. Mr. Scott Kennel, who is the traffic expert. Mr. Challoner, thank you. Please don't leave. So if we could have Mr. Kennel sworn?
Hey, Mr. Kennel, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Yes, Scott Kennel, K E N N E L. With McDonough and Ray Associates located at fourteen thirty-one Lakewood Road, Manasquan. I'm a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates, a traffic and transportation planning consulting firm. I have over thirty-five years of traffic and transportation planning experience throughout New Jersey. I've prepared over a thousand traffic impact studies. I've testified in over a thousand applications. In over a hundred municipalities in New Jersey. I've testified many times before the Howell Planning Board, as well as the Howell Zoning Board. And I've been qualified in the New Jersey Superior Court as a traffic expert.
Mr. Chair, may I ask that he, Mr. Kennel be permitted to testify this evening as a traffic expert? Yes?
Yes, we'll accept his credentials.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Kennel, there, thank you, there, there are three points that I think are very important for the, you to share with the board. The first is, I would ask if you could describe the nature of your pre-construction meeting with the DOT. And what was accomplished in that? Second is, I'm going to ask if you could identify the benefits of the redesigned access ways that are shown on the plan. And third, I would ask if you could confirm the, that the plan now does comply with Fire Chief Lewis's requirements. And just give us a demonstration of how onsite circulation for anticipated vehicles will occur.
Okay, let me first start off as, as far as explained by Mr. Challoner. The site currently has two sites, two uses. The first being the gas station convenience store, which has two curb cuts to Route thirty-three. The ingress driveway is approximately twenty to thirty feet from Colts Neck Road. Which is inconsistent with the NJ DOT design standards where they recommend a hundred-foot driveway spacing from a signalized intersection. And then as we move, move to the west, there is the farm stand, which I'll have to correct Mr. Challoner. There are two driveways serving the farm stand. So we have four driveways along our site frontage. I met with NJ DOT back in June of twenty twenty. It was a virtual meeting and discussed the redevelopment proposal. And during that discussion, it was DOT had recommended that the driveway. That the, the site be limited to one driveway to Route thirty-three and that it be limited to a right in, right out. The, the driveway as designed on Mr. Challoner's plan is located approximately four hundred feet west of Colts Neck Road. And for the board's benefit, if you're familiar with the site, it is located beyond further west than the farm stand driveway. So if you're out there in the field. And locate the driveways, the driveway proposed here will be west or further away than the existing driveways that serve the. The two uses. We have submitted an, an application to NJ DOT consistent with my pre-application meeting of last year. And the, the matter is under review by the department. The most important thing is, is that the access out to thirty-three is limited to right in, right out movements. And that all left turn movements can be accommodated at the traffic signal. Along the site frontage. And also, obviously, we have the site access out to Colts Neck Road that's just located as far north as possible. To maximize the distance from the traffic signal operation. The site itself has been designed to accommodate large wheelbase vehicles and to address the recommendations of Chief Lewis. And in my opinion, it provides positive onsite circulation, not only for customers, but for the large wheelbase vehicles that will serve the site.
If I may, I know that Chief Lewis has specific concerns about maneuvering around the back of the building. He had concerns with the width of driveways and the radii associated with them. Can you confirm that the plan has been revised to address all of the concerns with the Fire Chief with regard to movement of emergency vehicles onsite?
Yes, that's an affirmative.
Thank you. And if you could point out the benefits of eliminating the, the driveways and the, if you would classify the, the, the new driveways. Are they safer? Is it a better design?
Oh, yes, because of the, the existing driveways permitted left turn movements, ingress as well as egress. And given, as everybody's aware, of the traffic volumes on Route thirty-three. The ideal situation here is to have access to this site is to thirty, directly to thirty-three as right turn. Ingress and egress, and as I mentioned, the left turns can be accommodated via the traffic signal at Colts Neck Road. And what's important to recognize is we have a dedicated left turn lane on Route thirty-three eastbound to accommodate traffic originating from the. From the west.
And Mr., Mr. Chair, these are the points that I wanted Mr., Mr. Kennel to bring to your attention. I wanted the board to be aware that there was affirmative action on the part of your applicant to work with the DOT before coming before the board. And also, as we, it's become a standard procedure for this professional team. We spent two separate meetings with your Fire Chief to make certain that we had incorporated his recommendations. There is, there is some additional testimony with regard to the placement, placement of parking. We have one hundred and forty-one stalls where the ordinance requires one hundred and forty-four. There's some limited variance relief that's associated with that. And, Mr. Chair, it's our intention to conclude the, the planning testimony on those limited variances at our next meeting. With, with permission, that is the information and the testimony that we were, wanted Mr. Kennel to share with you. Again, in the middle of testimony, anticipating that he'll conclude at the next hearing after final design. I would ask, could be permitted to go to the third witness?
Yes, please.
Mr. Challoner, can you just stop sharing that? So we, thank you.
And our third witness this evening, Mr. Chair and board members, is Michael Testa. He is the architect who is responsible for the plans, the architectural plans of both the building and the signs. I'd ask if we could have his qual, if we could swear him in and have his qualifications made part of the record.
Okay, please swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
You're muted.
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Name is Michael. Last name is Testa, T E S T A.
Mr. Tester, please share with the board, the board's professionals and the public, your professional and educational background.
Yes, I graduated at New Jersey Institute of Technology in nineteen ninety-one, or the Bachelor's of Architecture. Licensed architect in good standing since nineteen ninety-six. Owner and principal of Michael V. Testa Architect, Manalapan, New Jersey since two thousand and two. I've testified on multiple boards across the state. I've never had the pleasure of testifying in front of Howell, but looking forward to speaking with everyone tonight.
Mr. Thank you. We'll accept your credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Tester, are you prepared to screen share or do you, would you like the host to screen share your exhibits?
I have it right here. Getting good at this. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Michael Testa. I'm the architect for this project. As you've seen in the site plan, the building that we have in front of you tonight is an L-shaped building. The bottom of the plan, if you can see my little hand moving around, is Route thirty-three. The right side would be Colts Neck Road. And it's a typical retail building. We have small retail tenants to the left, the anchor tenant in the corner. And then smaller retail tenants along the Colts Neck Road building. We have aluminum storefronts at the front facades, masonry exterior and a steel frame building. I'm trying to increase the scale so you guys can see the facade. Along the bottom of the drawing sheet PB one elevations, front building elevations. We have a mixture of different building elements on the outside to break up the facade with color, texture and massing. We listened to Ms. Beam's comments as she had written in her last review and her previous review. And we've incorporated the, the elements that are used on the two street side facades and brought those elements around to the rear and sides. And just to briefly go over the exterior finishes, we have a mixture of two different color. CMU upgraded CMU material with cultured stone accent band to base. We have a brick veneer on the bottom of pilasters that are wrapped with a cultured stones finish again with more cast stone accents. Horizontal accents. We have metal canopies extending over the storefronts to protect the occupants entering and exiting. And also to add some shading devices for the spaces. And the upper portion is a articulated stucco finish with B groups in it to break up the facade and wall area. On all three corners of the building, main corners, you have the corner here. The corner here and then a corner in the back. We have these tower elements to accentuate the corners and turning points of the building. Those turning points or tower elements will be cladded with a standing seam metal roof. Again, in keeping with the rest of the architecture of the building. The colors, we're looking to use an earth tone palette where we have beiges, browns. Bronze colors that we're going to be mixing in with white accent trim colors along the tops and horizontal banding. So as you can see here, we have some blank wall facades that there is no storefront for large anchor that we're breaking up. With different pilaster and, and cornice elements. And we've taken those elements around to the Colts neck side. This is the corner entrance into the anchor. Down the side of the building here, where we have some pilasters, cornice work, some parapets that are jumping up above the main parapet. And the tower elements. The main parapet elevation is, is twenty feet above grade. The accent parapets are twenty-two feet, six inches above grade. And the tower elements are twenty-nine feet, I'm sorry, thirty-two feet, nine and a half inches. Those elements are on the left side, which would be facing the west side of Route thirty-three. Where we have the pilasters bumping out, the same material mix and the cultured stone elements. At the rear of the building, we broke the rear facade up instead of, with, again, two different colors of, of. Concrete block material, the stucco finish, banding, cultured stone, brick and standing seam metal roof. At the bottom of page two, we have two signs, a main sign and a secondary sign. The main sign is twelve, twelve feet high by six feet wide. It's going to be a masonry structure, two tones to match the building with a flat cement, flat cement signage field. That they'll have surface mounted signage that will not be illuminated, placed in that area. Lighting for the sign would need to be ground mounted or top mounted that would wash those walls for both. The secondary sign is six feet wide by five feet high. And again, the same building materials and appearance as the main sign. That concludes my testimony at this time.
Mr. Tester, I think that you indicated that the feature of the building, the highest elevation of the feature of the building. Was just under thirty-three feet.
Correct, thirty-two feet, nine and a half inches. And that's got a prominent roof slope, so that way you can see those peaks and allow that color to shine through.
And the, the ordinance has a height of forty-five feet as permitted, so you're twelve feet less than what is permitted.
That's correct.
And would you confirm the mechanicals that would service this building would be screened from view? And if you could describe to the board members how they would be screened from view?
Yes, as you can see, the front facade along, I'm sorry about that, the front facade along Route thirty-three is parapet wall screening it from the Route thirty-three. And the Colts neck side, this is your Colts neck side in the top left. The other side of the building, parapet and parapets on all four sides. So the parapet walls will be up high enough that they will be screening the rooftop units from ground level.
And it appears from your testimony and the exhibit that this is what is referred to as a building finished on all four sides.
Correct.
You appear that there's no portion of this building that is left as a, a, a raw concrete wall. Could you, could you confirm that this does have finishes on all four sides?
Yes, sir. Finishes on all four sides and the finishes are consistent on all four sides. We didn't use less material on one versus the other. We tried to maintain continuity on all four sides.
Mr., and, and Mr. Tester, I think that you made the comment, but I just want to make certain, this is not your first design for this building. This is a design that is responsive to comments received from the board's professionals.
Absolutely, yes. Definitely reflective of Ms. Beam's comments with the articulation of all four facades without blank long stretches of wall. With the articulation of all four facades without blank long stretches of wall.
Mr. Chair, that is the testimony of Mr. Tester that we wanted to share with the board this evening.
Hey, Mr. Mr. Pape, if I could just ask the board if they thought it would be helpful if if they received a color rendering. Unless I missed it in my package for the next showing.
Mr. Chair, absolutely. The the colors that Mr. Tester just described, we can make certain are incorporated into the presentation at the second meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, our our fourth witness. Our fourth witness is is Julie Kobeski, who is a landscape architect. I've had the privilege of working with Ms. Kobeski for a number of years. All on plans that are simply stated, superior design landscaping. Malilow and Bauer is a nationally recognized. Landscape architectural firm. Going to ask Ms. If Ms. Kobeski could be sworn and then we'll share with you her credentials and go into her exhibit.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Oh, Julie, you're not coming through.
I can hear you now.
Yes, very, very good.
Okay, let me let me just start again. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state and spell your name for the record.
Julie Kobeski, K O B S K Y.
Ms. Kobeski, please share with all of us this evening, your education and your professional background.
I am a two thousand and four graduate of Penn State University where I received a Bachelor of Landscape Architecture degree. I've been working at the firm Malow and Bauer since two thousand and four, and I currently hold a position of associate within the firm. I'm a licensed landscape architect in the state of New Jersey and I've occurred throughout the state of New Jersey at a number of planning boards.
And is the plan that you're about to present a plan that you designed for this site?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, may I ask that Ms. Kobeski be allowed to testify this evening as a landscape architect?
We'll accept her credentials.
Thank you. Ms. Kobeski, be first to the board members. When we first received comments from the staff and realized that the landscape plan that had been tendered. Was not up to their standards. I asked Ms. Spiro if she would meet with me on the site. And to tour the site so that we could have a clear understanding of concerns. And then the information that was provided to me, I shared with Ms. Kobeski. And I do know that Ms. Kobeski has worked with Ms. Spiro since that time on the plans. I'm going to ask if you could, are you, Ms. Kobeski, can you screen share this your plan? Or would you like it to be brought up?
I can share my screen.
Very fine. Going to ask if you could describe the goals that you had as you designed this landscape perimeter. And if you could share in detail the way that you accomplished those goals.
So the focus of our landscape design was for the buffer areas of the plan. And as indicated in developing the landscape plan for these buffer areas, we consulted with Ms. Spiro. And we also drew from some of the successfully implemented landscape designs from some of the surrounding development. So our overall goal was to create an effective and also attractive buffer for the new development that responds to the various uses surrounding the site. So beginning along the the Route thirty-three buffer. We're showing a three-foot height raised berm planted with multi-stemmed ornamental trees to provide filter views into the site. While also concealing the parking from the roadway. We also have shade trees located fifty to fifty-five feet on center along Route thirty-three. And we are, we've also included pockets of evergreen shrubs and flowering perennial to enhance the buffer. And also provide additional screening between the berms. Continuing along on the opposite side of the entry drive on Route thirty-three in front of the basin, we've continued the street trees. And we've also included a staggered robe native shrubs in front of the basin fencing. And then at the entry into the site from Route thirty-three, we've included flowering ornamental trees and perennials. And also some ornamental grasses and low shrubs to enhance the project signage within this area. And to really help to create a sense of arrival at that Route thirty-three entrance into the site. Moving along to the Colts neck road buffer. Here we created more of a traditional and complete buffer with alternating evergreen trees and shrubs. Planted along the the rolling slope, so the slope rolls down towards the sidewalk. And we've included our planting along the upper end for the majority of of the buffer area. The evergreen plantings are also enhanced by pockets of low flowering shrubs and perennials. And we've also included street trees planted at fifty feet on center. To just create an attractive and complete buffer mainly for the future residents or the. The future residential community across Colts Neck Road. And again, at the the entry point from Colts Neck Road. We've included low shrubs, flowering perennials and ornamental trees to enhance the sense of arrival. And then finally, at the intersection. We've included rolling bed line planted with a mix of ornamental and shade trees, shrubs, flowering perennials and ornamental brasses to really create. Kind of a garden-like setting and enhance the the project signage and really create a nice setting at that intersection. Overall, with our plan, plant selections were determined through coordination with Ms. Spiro. And the previous landscape design for the site and. We placed a strong focus on on making sure that we had deer resistant planting. Throughout the site. So we feel that the the result is an effective buffer that enhances the overall development.
Mr. Chair, that is Ms. Kobeski's presentation. And if it's not inappropriate, if board members or board professionals have any comments to share. Either in the affirmative or corrective of the limited presentation that has been made to you. We would certainly benefit from that guidance if it was available.
One of the things that I would make a recommendation on is I'm looking at the environmental commission report from February. And I don't see, I don't see anything updated since. So I'm wondering if you're going back to the environmental commission to answer or respond to their comments.
Mr. Chair, we have requested to be placed on their next agenda, yes.
Can I, Brian, can I just jump in there too and Ken? It's it's an awkward time for for an applicant right now. Especially because this site is a known contaminated site being gas station and and known groundwater impacts. That being said, the NJDEP just recently changed their their soil remediation standards. And their indoor air screening levels are now indoor air standards promulgated by by the state. I I would highly recommend that on the next testimony that the LSRP. Be present for questioning on the current status. Because the history of the site changed. Due to these new standards, the the remedial action measures may have significantly changed because of of what recently happened. We're dealing with it in the environmental industry right now and it's not, you know. Especially these retail gas stations because there were significant order of magnitude changes with a certain compound that's known to be on. Gas stations, gas station sites, so that would be.
Truly, Mr. Mr.
Nick, do you feel that that it would be best to have the LSRP come to the environmental commission?
Yeah, it can if that that could be possible.
So what I. I've had the privilege now of representing Mr. Felix Brusilovski, your applicant for about twenty-five years. We have gone around the state of New Jersey. He has about thirty service stations and convenience stores throughout the state. He has a staff that maintains these. He has professional consultants that are on a monthly basis handling all of his sites. We certainly will bring our the environmental scientists to the environmental commission. I thank you for that guidance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Pape, I just wanted to say thank you. Ms. Kobeski did, you know, a great job and it's always a pleasure. To work with licensed landscape architects on landscape plans.
That's very kind of you. Thank you. You're welcome. Thanks for your guidance.
Does does anybody else have any questions or guidance for Mr. Pape and his team? Seeing none, Mr. Pape, would you like to conclude, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Board members, this was a courtesy that we greatly appreciate. By sharing what we have done, I think that you can, I hope that you can see that Mr. Brusilovski is working very hard to have a superior project. We will be visiting the environmental commission this coming month. We would like to return to the board shortly. And I would ask if Ms. Robano could advise us of when is the next opportunity to return?
Well, unfortunately, July fifteenth is booked, August fifth has three applications and August nineteenth has three applications scheduled. So our next date would probably be September second in person.
Mr. Pape?
Yes.
I'm just wondering. And certainly, you know, it's up to you, you've heard the schedule. I mean, if you wanted, you know, you could hope for the best and, you know, tee up as maybe the fourth application on one of those nights. And if we reach you, wonderful. If not, we may have to carry you, but, you know, maybe there's some opportunity.
Mr. Cuchero, thank you. The second meeting in August is a meeting that is available to me. And I if if that, if we could tee up on that. With the understanding that we may be reached and we may not be reached.
You you have two applications on that night, so it would be your night.
Okay. Wonderful. I'll take it. If it's available.
Deny you quickly on the other two to get this one up fast.
Oh, there we go. Mr. Cuchero, your good counsel is so valuable to me.
Just thinking of Felix, that's all. All right, so then we'll, Eileen, what's that night? August what?
August nineteenth, and we also need an extension of time, Mr. Pape.
Sure, on the record, there is an extension of time granted to the board by the applicant to complete their deliberations and take formal action. To be on the safe side will make it September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. I will follow it up with my letter tomorrow.
Okay, and also just for the record, case SP dash one zero seven eight, New Horizon Properties LLC. Will be carried to the board's August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting. That will be a virtual meeting which begins at seven o'clock. The instructions on how to access the virtual meeting will be provided or available at least ten days in advance. All documents will be on the township's website ten days in advance. If you have any questions, you can give Eileen a call and there will be no further notice to property owners.
Thank you.
Ms. Robano? Oh, Mr. Pape, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, that was it. Mr. Chair and Board members, board professionals, I wish to say thank you for the courtesies extended this evening and and good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Robano, could you please make note that I will be on vacation for that August nineteenth meeting?
Okay, thank you.
Has anybody else on the board got a scheduled meeting on a scheduled vacation that week?
I guess I'm going to have to cancel mine now that you're not here, Brian.
We just move it down the line. Okay, all right, any any master plan updates?
If I may, Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, so Jen, I'm sorry, you mind?
No, go ahead, Catherine.
Okay, I'm sorry. So I started to take yourself off mute. So at the council meeting on Tuesday. It was brought to our attention, well, not that it was brought, a suggestion was made. That if the master plan subcommittee, who had, I guess at their last meeting, suggest not suggested, but recommended that they're going to. Review fifteen to twenty roads in Howell. I spoke to Paul about this the other day and they would like some interaction. In how we're selecting, how the selection process is going to go. I'm not quite sure what that will open ourselves up to, so I'm going to allude to Ms. Beam on this one. But the residents suggested that they have some sort of input in how we're selecting the those fifteen to twenty roads. So Paul or Ms. Beam, whichever, whoever would like to comment on that.
Yeah, Ms. Beam could absolutely explain it better.
So I want to be very clear. My proposal said ten. So there's ten roads that are going to be selected. So I don't want there to be any misunderstanding. I mean, I'm more than happy to do more, but then that's going to cost the town more. So, you know, it's a big town. I can't look at every single road. So we were very clear in that we would evaluate ten roadways. We had anticipated fully to employ a tool called public input. Which is a a software tool that would create a survey that we could put on the website of the township. To solicit the input of the community. I just want to be very clear. This is not a safety study. So like if there's an accident on the road, that doesn't qualify it to be evaluated. This is a circulation study. So we're looking at traffic and we're looking at volumes and those types of things. We're not looking at. You know, whether there's been an accident at a particular intersection, not that that would not be important information to know, but that's not really the focus. So we had fully anticipated putting this survey online. The public would be be able to. Access it, give their input, but I fully intend to utilize information that we have based upon county data. As well as township data. Historical, current to evaluate, you know, which roadways, and I'm not suggesting like Route nine and Route thirty-three. I'm suggesting other redways in the town to be evaluated and that's something that, you know, we're still in the process of discussing at the subcommittee. But that survey, we're working on currently to get that up and running and get it put on the website. So the public will absolutely have the opportunity to give us input into like things that they'd like us to look at, for sure.
Great. So and and to add to that, I just want to be clear too, after speaking to a few members also. Is that there's a very misconception that, like you just said, Route nine and Route thirty-three, there. Route nine, obviously, any county and any state roads would be off limits. As far as as far as what we're going to look at when we're doing the circulation element, right? So it's only Howell roads, to be clear.
I mean, we could discuss um other like county type roads in terms of, you know, recommendations. But again, it would just be like recommendations that would be then evaluated by the county. The most productive process would be to look at local roads. I mean, I would not. Advocate evaluating nine and thirty-three. Those are DOT highways. Clearly, we're not going to evaluate one ninety-five. So, you know, the most productive use of our time is to look at local roads because that's where we have the ability to, you know. Enforce and implement any kind of changes. Otherwise, it's really just a matter of making recommendations on the county level. But I'm not precluding evaluating those roads because sometimes, you know, they do need to take a. They need to be looked at from our perspective. The county's not out there evaluating them. On a daily basis and recommendations will be to them, but we would have limited opportunity to do anything about it.
So my my concern is, we always talk about transparency, which we wanted to give our residents, obviously, in the community. That's huge for the council as well as the any of the boards. But my always my concern is is obviously everybody wants to talk about what happens in in their backyard or in their neighborhood. So how do you, when you do this survey and you take take these recommendations, how do you take these recommendations? And use them to the best of your ability where, you know, you're going to get the same, you're going to get ten neighbors who live in the same town to come on that survey and. Just talk about their neighborhood when we're trying as the planning board and subcommittee and council to to have the whole township, it'd be fair across the board. Without setting a precedence of some sort.
So I'm not going to prioritize any comment over the other. We would take all the comments that come in. We would evaluate them in many instances of not opining that this is going to happen here. But a lot of times there's comments and questions that are not really master plan related. Which we would address, I would address publicly, like when we have public input sessions or a public hearing. But, you know, if I got ten comments about the same road, you know, we would discuss what those comments are and what. and whether or not it's something that we could address through either like a formal evaluation of the road or just general recommendations overall. But, you know, we would definitely evaluate, and I would not dismiss any comments that come in, which is why I wanted to utilize that survey function where if you put the survey on the website, anybody could, you know, participate, give us input. We would then evaluate them, you know, kind of lump them together. If I get 10 comments that are the same, that's really one comment 10 times, you know, and we would evaluate whether or not it's something that we can address through the process. And I would be very forthcoming, you know, when we got to the public process, you know, going through the comments that I got them, I'm not dismissing them. Some of them are just not something that we can address through a master plan process.
So how, I'm sorry, who had, who was going to speak?
It was me, Councilwoman.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Ron.
So I think I want to be clear to you, to the public, to the board members, you know, just to kind of amplify some of the points that Jen raised. If you submit a comment, your comment is not going to be dismissed. It's not going to be lost. It's not going to be overlooked. Every comment is going to be evaluated. Every single comment is going to be reviewed in terms of what elements of that comment lend themselves to a road that merits evaluation with the funds that we have. So, you know, it's very important to the public that they participate in the process. I want to make that very clear to everyone, that you get your comments in, that your neighbors get their comments, and that your friends get their comments in. But I also want to be very clear that if you're the only one in your neighborhood who makes, who makes a comment, and another neighborhood makes 50 comments, that disparity doesn't dismiss the quality of your comment either.
Right.
You know, your comment is still going to be taken very seriously, and it's going to inform Jen. It's going to inform the master plan subcommittee, and it's going to inform the board as a whole as to where it's going to, you know, focus its priorities and its resources. So this is a critical moment in the master plan process. One that I think, you know, meeting, having the privilege of meeting with the master plan subcommittee several times, one that we're very much looking forward to, which is, you know, taking the comments and then being able to, you know, kind of funnel and narrow it and laser pinpoint it into what is necessary to have a credible master plan that our governing body can use as a tool to work with.
Well, so thank you for clarifying that as well, because I'm thinking about, you know, surveys and putting it out there. How many times can one person submit a survey? And I'm glad you said that. One serve, one comment in one neighborhood opposed to 50 will still get the same attention. So to be clear and full transparency, you could sit there and you could, you could send in, you know, you could be one person answering that survey 10 times, and everything's going to get looked at very.
Yeah, it's not really a popularity contest. It's more quality versus quantity. So, you know, if there's a legitimate concern, whether it's one comment in a neighborhood or 50 comments in another neighborhood, like Ron said, you know, we're going to look at everything that comes in. And if the one comment is, you know, very, very much on point, I'm not saying it outweighs the 50, but it doesn't get lost in the fact that 50 are in this neighborhood. So I don't want the public to feel like they have to like, it's not like a poll, right? Not like, keep commenting and you're, you know, it's, please just put your comments in. We're going to evaluate everything independently, and then we're going to move forward based upon, you know, data, facts, what have you. But, you know, it's not a poll. So there's no need, like, once you put your comment in, we will get it, you know. And granted, we're still working on the, on the language of the survey, so it's not available yet. It should be relatively soon. So I will let you know as soon as we can get that buttoned up, so we can get it over to, you know, town hall, so they can put it on the website. In the meantime, if people have questions or comments, they can get ahold of me, no problem, you know, at, and Eileen has all my contact information. I don't mean to put that on you, Eileen, but like, if.
Thank you.
Sorry. But if people want to, you know, need to get ahold of me, you know, please feel free to get ahold of me. But I just want to make it very clear. It's not a poll. So once you put your comment in, it's in, we'll get it. You don't have to put it in more than one time.
All right. I have one more question. I'm sorry for keeping everybody here. What if there are some, and I know you're using data and facts and talking to the county, whatever, but what if there's a road that someone doesn't bring to your attention and that may need attention? Will you, as, as the professionals, find that that road's a problem on your own without being prompted by a survey? And I don't know if Ron could answer that or you, but you know what I'm saying, Jen? So if there's a road that no one's bringing to your attention, and it is a problem, will we be able to capture that?
Well, again, like I said, you know, the focus is going to be evaluating 10 roads. So, you know, it's not to say that other roads and other issues will prompt recommendations moving forward, but the hardcore evaluation is going to be on 10 roads in the town, you know. And that's something that like, I have my own like list in my head that I'm going to recommend. I'm sure the subcommittee has recommendations. I'm sure the governing body has recommendations, and we're going to go through it as well as the engineering department who, you know, obviously has a lot of information as well. So, you know, we're going to have to go through, this iteration is 10 roads. I don't want to mislead anyone that says we're going to evaluate every single road in town. We are not. It's cost prohibitive, honestly, because the town's way too big. So, you know, we're going to be looking at, you know, your major corridors that accommodate a lot of traffic or those that have kind of become major corridors in the town. And then we're going to go from there. If there's other roads that bear evaluation, it could be a recommendation in this iteration to say, you know, future consideration should be roads XYZ. That's perfectly fine, but, you know, and if, and if we go through the process and then you and the governing body feel, you know what? They're right. These roads, you know, even though they're like 11, 12, 13, are things we need to talk about. That's something we could talk about later.
Councilwoman, also, you know, in terms of some roads that, you know, may not be the subject of comments from members of the public, what we also have are, you know, decades worth of resolutions from the planning board and the zoning board, which talk about where development is happening. They will highlight, you know, where there may be some circulation issues to review. So even if someone doesn't recommend a particular road, you know, Jen comes to the table with an institutional knowledge from both boards, having worked on all the applications to, to, you know, have a understanding of, you know, areas of the town to take a look at and those specific resolutions which identify very particular problems.
Great. Okay, awesome. I have all the faith in the world in all of you. So thank you. Thank you for that, Jen. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Hey, well, Paul, you're the head of the master plan committee. Do you have any comments you'd like to add?
I mean, I may have been able to say it better than Jennifer, but I think she covered it good. I don't think she missed anything. That's why sometimes it's just best to leave it to the professionals.
Okay, very good.
There.
Hey, is there any reason to go to executive session?
Oh, sorry, Brian. Just one more question for the good old master plan subcommittee. Is there any chance that the ERI gets adopted into the master plan this year?
Yes. So we did discuss it. Yes, it's going to be incorporated into the conservation, conservation element, Ron? That's what we discussed.
That's correct.
So yes.
I think that's what.
Yeah, it was, it was a very comprehensive document. It was well put together. So we just needed a little bit of time to read it first. We've now done that, and we think it could probably really be adopted, you know, in its totality within the conservation element of the master plan. So we're ready, we're ready to move on that. So I would be looking at the fall, because I think it's probably better to do that as a live meeting. You know, we can do that early in the fall through a public hearing and get that adopted. But definitely this year, there's not a doubt about that.
Good news. Thanks.
Yeah. Brian, I just had, I had a separate question altogether. If there's no other business.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. So I just, you know, we voted on cannabis, the master plan, you know, whether it was consistent with the master plan earlier. And just for public edification, because I'd like to understand, because this type of stuff comes up, you know, and before, obviously, before we vote, you know, we listen to, you know, Jennifer, we listen to Ron, you know, they give us some direction. So we had a couple no votes tonight. And I'm just curious if any of those guys, if you could kind of share why you voted no? Just, and I'm curious, just for maybe in the future, you know, as far as some of the board decisions, if you could give me or anybody else, it's curious as to why, you know, what you felt wasn't, why it wasn't consistent with the master plan.
Well, I mean, I, I'll certainly start.
Again, I'm just curious.
It's a very hot topic, okay? And I think that, why I personally did, there's, I don't see how you can say it's consistently, or what's the terminology, Ron?
Substantially consistent.
Substantially consistent with the master plan when there's nothing in the master plan about cannabis. So how can it be substantially consistent? I also, my personal feelings about this, by prohibiting it in the township, I think is detrimental.
Okay, I need to interject here because, again, another misconception is we are not prohibiting anything here. So what we did, and again, we've tried.
I disagree with that.
Well, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Ron.
I think as the question was originally posed, it was.
Thank you, Ron.
Relevant, but now I think we're getting into what is more properly part of what will be the public hearing before the governing body.
Right.
So I think that, you know, to Paul's point, I think that was the answer. You know, the answer is, you know, in the viewpoint of members who didn't vote, at least in part, or who didn't vote in favor of it being substantially consistent, it was probably a matter of that, you know, those words aren't found in the master plan. So that, that was the basis of that.
And I want to, I want you to understand, not, you know, I'm not asking it to be critical. I'm asking, I'm trying to understand, because again, you know, we don't have the opportunity because we're on Zoom meetings.
But I think that, you know, the question was asked, the question was answered. I think going beyond that is we start to get into what's a public hearing before the governing body.
I agree that.
There.
Okay, anybody got anything else?
Just before you take a motion to adjourn, our next meeting is July 15th. We're on our summer schedule. There is only the one meeting in July. So that is July.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Okay. Any reason for executive session?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Everyone enjoy your weekend.
Bye.